That's bad.
Okay, so, could you, next month, could you focus in?
I got you.
All right, good evening. This is a public medium of the Board of Education. Clark Public Schools adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, and that a special notice was made in conformance to Section 13 of the Act.
All right, motion go to the public. Ms. Akalonis, Ben. Harrison. Favor.
Aye.
All right, so if we could just rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You got a roll call, please?
Ms. Akalonis?
Here.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Here.
Mr. Brady? Ms. Harrison?
Here.
Ms. Guerrero?
Here.
Ms. Hickman?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. May?
Present.
Mrs. Smorrow?
Here.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Here.
Having nine board members, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, go to you? Yeah? Okay, Mr. Grandy?
This evening, we're going to acknowledge our valedictorian and salutatorian, our top two ranking students coming out of our Arthur L. Johnson High School this past year. And to present on them will be Mrs. Olivera, high school principal.
So, technology is not my friend today because my phone is spinning and the power is out at the high school, so I couldn't print my speech. So unfortunately, I'm going to be a little bit more brief than I normally would, which, if you know me, I'm not a really brief person. You know, being the, I'm going to start with Krista Steiner. Being the top-ranked student in your class and having that GPA for most of your entire high school career is quite a feat. And that's just what she accomplished three days ago when we graduated from Arthur L. Johnson High School. In her time at ALJ, Krista can be applauded for not only her academics but her involvement in many different aspects of our school. While attending ALJ, she served as, and these are the notes I do have, President of the National Honor Society, co-president of the Student Council, as well as a member of our cheerleading squad. In the fall, she is going to be a proud member of the University of Tennessee when she becomes a volunteer. Krista, we are so proud of you. You better come back and visit us, and good luck in your future. Next, I'm going to speak about Brayden Weber. Brayden Weber, again, three nights ago, was noted as our salutatorian. And Brayden, again, had so much poise onstage, the way that she spoke in front of our graduating class, and our families did not go unnoticed by her peers. And she's carried that poise with her throughout her high school career. In her four years, she's been a student visionary for cancer research through her support of the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, and that passion has transferred over to the student movement against cancer at our school. We're really proud of all that the SMAC Club has done for our building and for the community at large. Inside the classroom, Brayden excelled in most of our challenging curriculums and our advanced placement courses and our dual enrollment classes, helping congratulate Brayden and wish her best of luck in her next steps. Again, thank you so much, girls, for everything that you've done and the contributions that you've made to our high school. You will be sorely missed. Good luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Olivera. And next, we'd like to acknowledge Aiden Mazza. Aiden, your job this year that you performed as our student board rep was beyond commendable. The public got to see what you did each month at our meetings, but the preparation that went behind your reports. I was copied on the emails, and you were always ahead of time getting information from the principals so that you could report out to the public in a timely fashion. You're articulate, you're clear, you're detailed. While balancing a number of extracurriculars, a very tough schedule, I know you're involved in Miss Donaldson's AP Research and Seminar programs that require a lot of work, and we know next year when you're arcus studying environmental science, you're going to do such a superstar there, job there also. Congratulations and thank you. Ms. Guerrero, would you like to come forward for next honor?
Good evening. Normally, you see me at the dais as the representative from Garwood, but I'm standing here before you today as the president of Union County School Board Association. In May, at our annual end-of-the-year meetings, we have, this is a time that we celebrate board members for their achievements, if they've achieved certain certifications within New Jersey School Board Association, as well as milestones, which is time spent in the service of the students of the towns where they represent by being on the Board of Education. So it's my privilege tonight to present three milestone awards. The first one is to Mr. Dunkerslute. This is presented from the New Jersey School Board Association Milestone Award to Stephen Dunkerslute in gratitude for 10 years of dedication to the children of Clark Township, the School District, Union County, and the state of New Jersey. Congratulations. The next milestone award I have is presented to Mr. Tom Lewis. New Jersey School Board Association Milestone Award is presented to Thomas Lewis in gratitude for 20 years of dedication to the children of Clark Township School District, Union County, and the state of New Jersey. Congratulations.
Aiden, you crushed it.
And my last award is presented to Ms. Lorraine Akalonis. New Jersey School Board Association Milestone Award is presented to Lorraine Akalonis in gratitude for 30 years of dedication to the children of Clark Township School District, Union County, and the state of New Jersey. And in addition, the, the school board does give, these milestones are five-year increments, and by the time you get to the 30 years that Ms. Akalonis has, has been a member of the Board of Education, not only do you get a citation, but you get a very lovely plaque. So, congratulations.
Well, after 30 years, I think I deserve a couple of minutes of your time just to say thank you. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the community, the students, the faculty, serving as a volunteer to help the Clark schools become one of the best in Union County and maybe the state. I enjoy working with our board. We have a very good, diverse board. We listen to each other's comments. We all have differences of opinions, but we always come to a consensus, which is always best for our students and our school system. So I thank you, oh, yes, and working on the board is made much easier because of our wonderful superintendent, Mr. Ed Grande. He is the best. I just have to say that. He's become a friend, and I hope I continue serving on the board. And again, I thank you for allowing me to do so, and I can't believe it's been 30 years. Oh, my God. Thank you.
Congratulations, all.
Congratulations to all tonight's recipients.
All right, so thank you for that, but congratulations really to the, to the students here, Krista, Braylon, and Aiden. So with that, we'll get an approval of minutes from the last month and previous kind of motion. Ms. Hickman, followed by Mr. May. Any questions or comments on those? Got a roll call, please?
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Yes.
Motion carried?
At this time, we're going to open the floor to the public for agenda items only. There's only 152 items to choose from, if you'd like to talk about one. If there's no questions or comments about those 152 items, we'll move to the next part. So on personnel, we have items 1 through 81. Can I get a motion? I see Ms. Akalonis, Ms. Harrison. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Well, I abstain on numbers 2 through 6, 8, 9, 11 through 16, 18 through 20, 24, 26, 33, 36, 46, 48, 49, 52, 53, 55, 56, 57, 62, 63, 67, 71 to 76.
And yes, on the rest.
Should I read that back?
Sure.
All right, just make sure we have it correctly. 2, 2 through 6, 8, 9, 11 through 16, 18 through 20, 24, 26, 33, 36, 46, 48, 49, 52, 53, 55, 56, 57, 62, 67, and 71 through 76.
Also 63.
63. Thank you. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorrow?
I'm abstaining on number 33, yes to the rest.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I, I want to make a, a comment on the personnel side. We basically had some educational retirements that were fantastic, master teachers. We start with June Currie, a nurse at the high school, Mary Jo Baker, Mike Sheridan, Anne Marie Estevies, Jackie Hendricks, Margot Rosenmeyer. These are pros. Don't ever think it's so easy to replace great teachers. They have given a lot to the district of Clark. It would be remiss if I didn't thank them, congratulate them for the hard work. We're the district that we are because of our staff, our teachers, administrators. So those particular teachers I know, in particular, really put enormous effort into educating and making Clark Garwood the best school it could possibly be. So congratulations to those staff numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to curriculum and education. We have items 82 to 85. Can I get a motion? I see Ms. Hickman and Ms. Akalonis. A roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Yes.
Mr. Brady? Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Yes.
Motion carried?
We then have policy number 86, a motion, Mr. Bensavenga, followed by Ms. Guerrero. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Yes.
Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Follow that with board governance items 87 to 102. Can I get a motion? Not all at once. Mr. Bensavenga, Mrs. Harrison, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Abstain on 89, 90, 95, 96, 98, 99. Yes, on the rest.
Thank you. Ms. Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Yes.
Motion carried?
We then have finance items 103 to 152, and addenda item number one for finance. And before I get a motion, addenda one is a board resolution for the September 16th vote for our board referendum. Can I get a motion? Mr. Smorrow, followed by Mr. May. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes.
Mr. Bensavenga?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Guerrero?
Abstain on 114, 115, 148, 149, and the addendum.
Hickman?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mrs. Smorrow?
Yes.
And Mr. Dunkerslute?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you. And at this time, we'll hand it over to Mr. Grandy for this report of the superintendent.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Dunkerslute. Once again, congratulations to Krista and Brayden. Many thanks, Aiden. And congratulations, Ms. Akalonis, Mr. Dunkerslute, and Mr. Lewis. The retirements that Mr. Lewis spoke about, the large majority of them were accepted at previous board meetings, but on this evening's agenda was the retirement of Ms. Jackie Hedrick, 27 years, her last position being an ALJ mathematics teacher. And many congratulations to Jackie on her next life steps. Now, the other end of the spectrum, we have new administrators and teachers coming into district. Congratulations to Mrs. Donaldson and Mr. Tenpenny, and I'm looking forward to working with both of you in your new roles. I see you both in the audience this evening. If you'd like to just stand up and put a name to the, a face to the name. You want to say a few words? Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Tenpenny, and first, I would like to say thank you. I want to say thank you to the superintendent, Mr. Grande, and the entire Clark Board of Education. I'm extremely excited, and I can't wait to be a part of the Clark team. So thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Many of you know me. For those of you in the audience who don't know me, I'm Joy Donaldson, and I'm the newly appointed administrator, supervisor of the Clark Preschools, and I'm really excited. I wish to express my gratitude for this opportunity. My own son went through the Clark Preschool when it was a tuition-based program, and he is now ready for high school. I believe that he's ready for high school in no small part to the preschool experience that he had. So I wish to replicate that for you. I'm excited to work with our students and families as they take their first steps into the Clark, Clark Public School District. My life has been committed to providing students the best educational experience, and that's not going to stop as I step into this new role. And congratulations, Ms. Akalonis, Mr. Dunkerslute, Mr. Lewis. Congratulations, Aiden, Brayden, and Krista. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, over the years, I've had the opportunity to know both Ms. Donaldson and Mr. Tenpenny, and I know that they've done fine jobs in their previous positions that they held, and I have all the confidence in the world that they're going to do really, really well in their new positions. So welcome, behalf of the board, welcome to both of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smorrow. Moving on to the report of the committees.
I saw, more.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Grandy.
You're good. We have some additional new appointments this evening, which places us in a good position heading into the summer. I believe Mrs. Shannon Boyce, who's our special education teacher at Carl H. Comfess with us this evening? Welcome, Shannon.
Thank you.
Lauren Lapore, who's going to be our new grade-three teacher at the Frankie Henley School. And Brianna Gotts, who's going to be our new security receptionist at the ALJ preschool Congratulations, everyone. Summer's a busy time with such things as curriculum writing, school counseling and child study teamwork, extended school year, Ortonham-Galeam training, Camp Invention, and Clark connects to the past, along with summer building projects. It's nice to see the heartbeat of the district being kept up and us getting ready for our students' return and our staff's return in September. On this evening's agenda is also a number of support staff reappointments, such as our professional aides, lunch aides, different positions that are non-certificated but hold an equally important place with our children's education. The approval of our new three-year comprehensive equity plan is on this evening's agenda, and many thanks to Dr. Austin and her team, Mr. Kalikas being one of those team members. Once again, the Board of Education will be reimbursing any costs in excess of $250 for our college courses taken while students are here at ALJ, provided that the students receive an A or higher. One course in grades nine and 10, one each year, and then two courses in grade 11 and 12, again, two each year. We would like to thank the Frankie Henley Valley Road School PTAs for their donation of summer reading books, along with a $1,000 check for ALJ educational opportunities and resources for students at ALJ by ExxonMobil in collaboration with P&amp;J Fuel, Inc., under ExxonMobil's Educational Alliance Program. And the past couple of weeks, we've been at a number of different award dinners and ceremonies. Last week was our week of promotions graduation, and again, just getting to see our students recognized for their good hard work is really heartwarming. Thank you and have a great evening.
Sure you're done? Okay. All right, so moving on to the report of the committees. Do we have any? Seeing none from there, we'll do unfinished or new business. Seeing none there. One last time, we're going to hand it over, Aiden, for a student board member update.
Thank you, and good evening. I'll keep my report brief tonight with things winding down at the schools. I'll begin my report with events at Arthur L. Johnson High School. June was a big month for seniors, from the exciting senior trip to the Pocono Valley Resort to the celebratory senior dinner. Looking towards Comf middle school, students had fun last week with a bagel sale on Wednesday the 18th. Looking towards the future for Comf, a Camp Cougar program is running to prepare incoming sixth graders for middle school, which will be hosted on August 21st, 22nd, 25th, and 26th. Over at Frankie Henley and Valley Road School, students had an exciting close to the year with fifth-grade pool parties celebrating students moving up to the middle school. Alongside this, the school's got some outside fun in the sun with their field days, giving students a chance to compete in various outside activities. Finally, June 20th was the last day for all students in the Clark Public School District. On June 20th, graduation was held, and it was no doubt an emotional day for students of every single grade. I know for all the seniors here at Arthur L. Johnson, graduation marked the close of a very important chapter in all of our lives, and I look forward to seeing where it'll take all of us. And besides from that, I just want to thank the board, Mr. Grande, all the staff at ALJ. It has been an amazing opportunity to go to the school for these four years and to be the student representative of the board, and I'm so thankful for the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aiden.
I just want to thank our principal who's here, Tara Olivera, Katrina Poske. I think our graduation was just downright fabulous Friday night. I don't think you could make it any better. It was an advertisement to basically be in the Clark schools. It was one fantastic night, that I know the work that they put into it. So I would not take a blind eye to probably the best graduation in Union County. I want to thank, basically, Mr. Grande, but most important, the teachers, the maintenance, the administration that made that work. So Tara did a fantastic job. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right, so now at this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public for non-agenda items only. Come up, please state your name, your address.
Gus Kalikas, 51 Woodland Road. As many of the board members obviously know, and I'm sure many in the audience already know, friend, coach, educator, and board member, Mr. Tom Lewis recently retired from the Rowway School System after 52 amazing years in education. While the Union County Athletic Directors did do something to honor Mr. Lewis and all he's done for Union County, I was approached last week by some of our very own student athletes to ask if there was something they could do to honor him. Behind me, you see members of the girls' basketball team and the boys' basketball team, which, to say the least, are Tommy's, he's very passionate, let's just say, about both of these programs. So in order to honor Tommy, all that he's done for 52 years, and especially all that he's done for our student athletes at Arthur L. Johnson High School, the girls and boys wanted to come up, present him with something, and say a few words.
Mr. Lewis, we represent all of the student athletes at Arthur L. Johnson High School, and just wanted to take a moment to thank you for all that you have done and will continue to do for all of us, and present you with the plaque to thank you. We love seeing you at our games and always look forward to your passionate speeches, whether they're in the locker room, award ceremonies, or just when you run into us in the hallways of Arthur L. Johnson High School. Congratulations on your retirement of your 52 years in education, and we know that all that means is that you will have a lot more time to come see our games next year.
Thank you.
The plaque states, "With great, with our greatest appreciation, the student athletes of Arthur L. Johnson High School, I would like to thank Mr. Thomas Lewis in recognition for your passion and commitment to Union County Athletics and the student athletes."
Tommy, if you could come down here so we could present you with this plaque? Tommy, congratulations from our student athletes right here. Awesome guys, if you could go around Mr. Lewis.
It's very humbling to have passion, and there's other board members as well, but believe me, this is very, very appreciative. I enjoy every minute of it, and I just can't thank them enough for coming out tonight. Thank you so much for this award. Thank you.
So at this time, the, it's open to public for any other non-agenda items only. If you'd like to come up, state your name, your address. We have three minutes per topic. See, okay. Mr. Drage, you just pull the microphone back towards you. Yep, here you go.
Bill Draghi, 47 Post Road, Clark, New Jersey. The last time I came, I requested, well, the board or the superintendent to state whether they would follow Governor Murphy's law that says a transgender student that wants to change sex and disagrees with the parent, that the parent would have the, have the last say. And I was given the answer yet by Superintendent Grandy that that would be true. But the main thing is, it would have to be, the, the board would have to also go along with that, I believe, in order for that to be true. Is that correct?
Yes, and the board supports that stance also.
I'm sorry?
Yes, and the board supports that stance.
My hearing isn't too great. What was that last phrase?
You're, you're correct. The board would have to be in agreement, and they are.
And they are?
Yes.
But don't they have to vote on it?
We voted on a policy for... We voted on a policy for transgender students when the policy originally came out, maybe two or three years back.
Yes.
Yep.
And, but they had to go along with it then because...
It, it puts to rights the way we adopted it. It puts to rights with the parents, that policy.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Um, and also, the, the, another part of the law of Governor Murphy said, evil Governor Murphy, is that you must also teach abortion, uh, ideas to the students, which is probably coming from Planned Parenthood or something, I would, I would think. I can never find what is actually being taught on that. And that's even worse than, uh, the transgender stuff. And I would hope that, that should be just left up to the parents. They shouldn't get into it at all in school. Parental guidance is the main thing. And if they're, and if the child is told in class about whether they should have an abortion, if they had a baby or something, it should not be anything to do with the school or the state, uh, telling them what to do, or even giving them information on it. It should be just coming from the parents, that's all. All sex should be kept out of the classroom, and it's, it's really the main, the main thing is, if the parents should be, be the last ones and the ones to actually give them the guidance, not the state, as Governor Murphy states. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Any other comments about non-agenda items at this time? So seeing none, we will close that portion of the meeting out, and we'll move on to a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. No way, wait. Before everybody agrees, Mr. Smorall, one last thing.
Before we adjourn, I just want to state that, uh, I wanted to piggyback on what took place earlier with Mr. Thomas Lewis. Um, I've known Mr. Lewis for the 52 years that he's been in education, and I want to just state that he has not just changed the lives of the people that you saw here, but over the course of his career, he's changed the lives of so many people, including myself. I was a Roy High School student when he first started. And, um, I just want to really let everybody know that he had a phenomenal career. He touched so many lives, and he was an inspiration for so many people, and his legacy will live on for a long time. And there was a quote from Eugene O'Neill, which said that "We can always leave the, the world a better place than we found it." And he's a perfect example of a man who believed this world a better place than it was when he got here. So I'd like to, just like everybody in the room to know that. Thank you.
Ms. Akalonis?
Yes, I would also like to thank Mr. Lewis. Uh, I worked in Elizabeth in the beginning of my career as a teacher and supervisor, and then in 1988, I decided to come to the suburbs and start working in Raway. And I have to say, I was the newbie in Raway. I didn't know the groundwork. I didn't know what to expect. I didn't know who the players were. But I have to say that I can thank Mr. Lewis, who befriended me and watched over me. He took me by the hand, guided me through the ins and outs and the tunnels and closets with the skeletons, so to speak. And I learned what I had to do. And ever since then, he, well, he continued to mentor me, and he became my friend. And even after I retired and became, um, board member with him, he has just been one of the most gracious, loving, and warm-hearted people that I've ever known, and I am blessed to know him. So thank you, Tommy.
So, um, I've had the privilege to know Mr. Lewis now for close to 50 years, and, um, for those that know him, know that in addition to him having enormous passion for the school district and for the kids and their success, he has unbelievable energy. If you see him, he's going 100 miles an hour all day. What I would like to tell you, though, is we're really getting the scaled-down version of him. I played high school basketball here at Johnson when Mr. Lewis was coaching at Raway. If you think he had, has energy now, you should have seen him back then. He was off the charts. But he's had, I consider him one of my closest friends. Um, he's just, he's, he just has such a big heart. He cares so much about this district and, and the people in it, whether it's the teachers, the administrators, the students, and I think he shows it day in and day out. So I congratulate him on just a spectacular career, Mr. Lewis. I, I also, I also just want to have a quick shout out, um, on behalf of the Athletic Committee, the girls' softball team won their second section state title this year, which is just a spectacular accomplishment. Uh, unfortunately, they were beaten 5-4 in the semifinal game, which was a heartbreaker, but they had a spectacular season. And so on behalf of the Board of Education and the Athletic Committee, just want to congratulate them. And I just also want to give a quick shout out to Brody Galvin, uh, Johnson baseball player, who was named to the Quad County Underclassmen All-Star Game, which was played last week. He pitched an inning, and he did real well. So congratulations to him as well. So thank you.
I, I want to close tonight because I want to thank everyone. Uh, truly, truly, I appreciate it. Um, I think they're talking about somebody I don't know, but I just say that I didn't pay these people. I, if I sat out in the audience, you would think that I came in with $5,000 and gave everybody money. But, uh, I appreciate it. And most important thing that I think that you could do in life is care, root, and support people. Okay? You know, uh, the famous Mae West said a line that I'm sure Kevin has heard it 5,000 times. She turned around and said, "You only live once, but if you do it right, you only need to live once." And I just say one thing. I'm so thankful to be involved and support, and I thank the Board of Education and this community because there's so many things that we're going to accomplish. We're going to make Clark number one. We're going to work together, energy, passion. So thank you so much for all the comments, and I just want to close by saying God bless everyone, and thank you very much.
Just to be clear, he's not retiring from here. Just be, just be clear. So with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Thank you.